I would like to welcome everybody to part one of the Orlando Sentinels interview with the candidates to fill the vacancy in Orlando City Council District Five that was created when Governor Ron DeSantis suspended Commissioner Regina Hill. Because there are seven candidates, we split them into two groups. We'll do our best to ensure that each panel gets the same questions. And joining us today are Shanika Shan Rose. She is the Executive Director of the Eatonville Community Redevelopment Agency. We have Miles Mulrain, a community activist and founder of a nonprofit, and Cameron Hope, who owns a tax business here in town and is a longtime Orlando resident. I thank you, I thank you all for joining us. And I will start with our first question. The person who is elected to this position faces a very uncertain future with a term that could end in just a few months or nearly two years. If you win this election, what will you do to ensure that you effectively represent the residents of District Five in the time, whatever time you have? And let's start with Mr. Hope.
Well, yeah, it is uncertain how long our term could be. Ms. Hill would have to wrap up her legal affairs. But one of the first things that I would like to do if I was elected to this position, I really like to go through the different areas or neighborhoods in the district, you know, starting with the downtown Paramore area and, you know, eventually to Mercy Drive, Timberleaf, you know, some parts of Metro West, Ivy Lane. I've been going out canvassing and talking with residents, but, you know, one of my main focus is economic development. So I like to look at a lot of the commercial areas in those particular areas and see the things that can be done to begin to put together a plan to just bring more economic vitality to the entire district. And so that will be one of my first main goals. My second goal is, you know, dealing with the seniors in those areas and addressing their needs and going out and reaching out to each one of those in those areas and then the residents as well. So that three-pronged approach with businesses, the seniors, and the residents is, you know, more of my plan when I get into office.
All right, Ms. Rose, same question.
So as a former city of Orlando employee, starting in day one, going and meet back with and, you know, continue the relationship and the reports with the city staff and directors, I'm committed to meeting with Commissioner Hill and find out, you know, where was she and how do we continue the legacy that she began? And then meeting with the neighborhood associations. Upon being elected the first day, you know, I want to work on creating a community prayer breakfast. District Five is hurting and we need a lot of healing and coming together and unity. The base of my platform is creating different communities and that includes several prompts. So housing affordability, seniors' needs. So when housing is not affordable, crime is going to continue. When we talk about not having enough programs for our youth, if they're not, if there's not something for them to do, especially our middle school youth, then they're going to get into trouble. And, you know, we need to look at how do we, you know, unify the community together. Former city of Orlando employee, you know, I worked on a lot of plans and I think that we need to look at the consultants that have come in and let's work together to figure out how do we continue those plans? We had a vision plan for downtown. I used to work in the Community Redevelopment Agency and I used to work in permitting. So that's the beast in the heart of the city of Orlando, the beast of how things happen, how things flow. Being able to meet with MPB and a lot of our advisory boards at the city of Orlando and kind of hear where things are going. So there's chairs for all of our advisory boards, meeting with the chairs to find out what's going on, how can we work together, meeting with the residents, meeting with the business. As a business owner, okay, I'm going to wrap up. As a business owner, I run a nonprofit and, you know, I already continue the work of the District Five.
Mr. Mulrain, I'd love to hear your thoughts on this one too.
Okay, thank you. I believe just like Ms. Rose said and Mr. Hope said, I actually agree with the former candidates what they said. Basically, I think that we need to have an ear to the streets. There's been a lot of development taking place in District Five already. We see all the different things taking place downtown and in the different neighborhoods in District Five. So it's important to find out what's going on. You can't just get into place and try to disrupt everything or try to go against everything because some things are in place that have been taking place for years. So it's important to learn that, but it's also important to reach out to the community. That's why me as a community activist and somebody who's done a lot of community forums in different neighborhoods in the District Five in the past, I would utilize tools like that to have your ears to the ground and find out where were some misses at in the last administration that we can kind of pick up at. I think that District Five has been going through a big development process, but a lot of residents have felt left out. So that's one of the things that I would want to try to bridge that gap between and make sure that with this new development, people are not feeling like they're being moved out or being weeded out by some of these big things that are coming to town. And I think it's important that we work on the public safety that's going on and that we work with the residents and we work with the already institutions that are doing this. Me as a member of the Citizen Safety Task Force for Orange County, for the past three years, we've been working on programs that can help push in the city and the county. And these are some of the things that I would like to continue if elected as the next commissioner.
I'd like to follow up on that one. So how would you rate the policing from the Orlando Police Department in District Five? And what would you press the police department to do differently? And what do you think they're doing right? We'll start with Shan Rose.
So during COVID, about 2020-21, we did a community policing forum, so to speak, where we sat down with law enforcement in the community and we created a plan on how to positively engage with law enforcement in the community. We first need to, I have to give credit to Chief Smith, our current police chief, because he has been doing tours around the district and the various areas. I think we need to do a better job of more ensuring that our officers are attending neighborhood association meetings and really hearing from the people. I think continuing to bridge the gap with law enforcement and our youth is going to be really, really critical. You hear a lot about stereotyping. And so, you know, back in the days, when you think about in the back in the old days, police officers knew the youth in the community, right? And so we've got to do a better job of ensuring that our officers know our youth and can build the relationships and build the bonds. We definitely have to continue to bridge the gap. I proposed a, what I would consider an alliance from the community perspective, where the community residents, when there are officers who are given a hard time in our communities, the community residents come together and form an alliance so that they can say, well, we know Officer so-and-so has been harassing us in this community. Well, when one person goes, they may feel intimidated. You know, we've heard times where officers are following people or other officers are showing up at people's house after they form a complaint. So what it would be is encouraging the former as the commissioner, encouraging the creation of an alliance with the residents where we can put money together where people don't feel safe because they filed a complaint. You know, when I'm out here talking to the community, you go from community, community, and you hear that the same officer's names are being mentioned as being bad officers or harassing. So we got to do a better job of community policing and ensuring that our community bridges, that we bridge the gap with law enforcement in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mulrain.
Thank you. I believe with the policing and OPD, you know, it's two parts. I've grown up in District Five my whole life. I've been a kid here and I can't say that I remember a time where OPD was actually on the ground connecting with the youth. My history, just to be totally blunt, it's been a lot of rash and harsh treatment from OPD in the past. That's just to be realistic, that's what people have experienced. I think in the near past, with the changes, with the innovations, people like Chief Smith have taken steps that have made change, even as early as Chief Mina, you know, they had started making changes. But I think you have to do a lot more. I have been a big push for people to have community policing. I've been part of programs that have been brought here that kind of work with communities and kind of take the slack off of the police. Because there is a part where police serve and protect and they respond to it. But when it comes to community policing and it comes to actually improving the communities, it's not going to be done by just incarcerating or arresting. It's going to be done by restoring the community. And I agree with other candidates when they say that we do need to bridge the gap between law enforcement and the community. And I do believe that we also need to be more accountable with law enforcement, more transparent. Most important things that I've done, I've traveled to places like Newark in Chicago and we've done sit downs with the police and we've done this in Orlando with the police and the community. And we've had sessions where they talk and get to know each other. It's very important that people know who's actually in neighborhood, who's patrolling the streets. But it's also important that we hold people accountable. We can't keep law enforcement above the law, but we also got to let them do their job. So that comes from communication, that comes from accountability, and it comes from trust. And that's what we've been pushing for these past eight years.
Thank you, Mr. Hope.
Yeah, well, policing in District Five, there's no doubt that both police departments, OPD and the Orange County Sheriff's Department, they're located in District Five. So, you know, there's a heavy presence of police officers in District Five. Like Miles was saying, I think that, you know, most police work is in District Five is reactionary. And we need to find out the root causes and work on developing plans and things to where the community is solving their own problems. And, you know, there's no problem with a police presence, but when they have to intervene and interact and, you know, escalate, you know, in community issues, this is where the problems arise. So, you know, I think that the police, they do the best that they can with what they have. But I think it's going to be, you know, the community that's going to be the deciding factor of, you know, how this relationship with the police continues in the district.
Thank you very much. If I could, I wanted to ask a quick question about the homeless issue. First, I wanted to, it's sort of a two-part question, but I wanted to ask you all whether you agree with the city's recent actions about homeless people sleeping outdoors? And then taking that more broadly, what are your thoughts on how the homeless issue and affordable housing are being dealt with right now? And let me start with Mr. Hope.
You know, I want to address the homeless issue with compassion and empathy for the least among us and, you know, their situation. However, there are funds that are being allocated towards this and the city has an action plan in place to deal with the homeless situation. I just think that the bottom line is, you know, there's a bed space issue. I think there's only three, there's only three facilities that house the homeless in District Five. And it just really boils down to the amount of homeless and the amount of bed space that's available. I think that a lot of the funds are going towards services, other services for the homeless. But I think more of those funds, we have to come up with ideas and actually provide shelter. Because until you get shelter, you're basically homeless. So, you know, whether you're getting health care or whether you're getting access to other means of homeless services, you know, the root necessity thing that's needed is shelter, basically.
Just a quick follow-up, since I did ask a two-part question. What are your thoughts on the city's recent issues with the limits on sleeping outdoors?
I mean, I don't agree with that. I think that, you know, that's boiling down to basically bed space. And I think that, you know, someone's come up with the idea that now we're going to use the jail as some bed space, you know, for some of our homeless citizens. So, you know, no, I don't agree with it. I think that we can, you know, find other ways to shelter our homeless that are among us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mulrain.
I actually don't agree with the recent ruling to actually penalize people for sleeping outdoors. I understand where it's coming from. I actually grew up next to Paramore, right next to the Coalition, to be frank. So I have a big experience with the homeless. And now in my days as a nonprofit, we do transitional housing. We work with the Coalition, the HSA and Aspire. We even part of the Brighter Days Initiative to help house the youth who are facing this housing insecurity issue. It's big. So that's another reason why I don't believe in penalizing somebody or criminalizing somebody for being in this situation. There are a lot of residents in the district that are one missed paycheck away from being in that same situation who may need someone in the interim to stay. So criminalizing somebody for their hard times is not something that I'm a champion for. I understand that we need to have the areas clear. We need to have places that people feel safe and might not feel the best when you see a lot of people there. But we need empathy. And I think that there has been programs that have been done in the past that have helped with rental assistance and have helped with getting people off the ground. I even seen the Christian Service Center when they were going out to the neighborhoods and talking to people in the tents and getting them off the street and providing them with those crucial resources. Those are the type of things that we need to push more for before we push for more law enforcement. And at the end of the day, what's going on with the homeless population, a lot of them are becoming clever and going to hospitals and other facilities to stay for the night because they can't sleep on the side no more. So it takes up other necessities and resources that we need for the district if we don't bring a real solution. So I believe that when it comes to affordable housing, we're building a lot of new projects in this district, but we need to also build just solely affordable housing projects. While we're building these mixed income projects, let's not forget the people who are on fixed income who would never meet the standard that others are paying in these apartments and these homes. Those are the people, the senior citizens, the people who are disabled, the veterans, that we need to not forget because a lot of people homeless are not criminals. They're not bad people, they're just on bad times. So we need to make sure that we incorporate that in our plans when we're building these new facilities and these new properties. Let's make sure we don't forget the little people that are being missed out.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rose.
So a few things. The city of Orlando ordinance has been supported by the governor's mandate on homelessness. We can't jail our way through homelessness. When I was at the city of Orlando, we submitted a proposal for what's called a homeless community court, where we were looking, how do we help people connect them with the things that they might have been arrested? And we do sweat equity as opposed to court fines and fees. So let's, I'm just give some numbers. The average person that goes to jail when they get arrested, homelessness, you can sit in jail for up to 90 days and then you can come out with a $285 restitution that you have to pay. So if you end up arrested 10 times, that's over, that's nearly $3,000 that you rack up in fines and fees. Well, those create barriers for getting housing and those create, and we have to work to create, to reduce those barriers. So when I proposed the homeless court, what it did was there was a multitude of things. So one of the things that have been implemented from that project was CRT, which was Critical Intervention Training with Law Enforcement. At the time, there were a very select few officers at the city of Orlando who had had CIT. I do, with every new officer that comes in, they do CIT. Before, it was just for basic departments and if you work in certain areas, maybe if you work downtown. But understanding, crisis happens everywhere. So now officers, OPD officers are now getting CIT as they're coming in. Homelessness is an extremely complex situation. We do need to look at long-term mental health facilities in the central Florida region. We do need to talk to the other municipalities who have homeless shelters, who their homeless population is reaching in central Florida. And then we need to say, how do we connect people to resources? I've been homeless and it was finances. It was, I didn't know how to budget, I didn't know how to save to be able to afford my bills. So we have to work on all of the complex issues and we definitely need to work with the private sector. We definitely need to bring in the public-private partnership to say, how do we make this better? How do we create affordable housing? And how do we create a place where everyone can live, work, and play in District Five?
And the obvious follow-up to that, I believe, is, you know, what happens to people before they become homeless? As you all know, housing costs skyrocketed in District Five. And the city has a couple of projects in the pipeline. What more should Orlando be doing to expand access to affordable housing? And let's start with Ms. Rose.
So there are a few things. There's billions of dollars of construction coming into this community and so we have to connect resources. District Five alone has four different schools within it. So you've got OCL, the OCPS Tech School, you've got Valencia, and there's actually Valencia, the main campus is on Kirkman, but the secondary campus is on WD Judge in the Mercy Drive area. You have FAMU Law School and then you have UCF Downtown, which offers resources to help people get their GED. So I think first, first steps first, and we have to connect people to resources in order to help them to be able to become financially stable. When folks can afford to live somewhere, that reduces, that's the first step to reducing barriers. When we talk about affordable housing, I am committed to when developers are coming in for projects across the entire city of Orlando. So understanding the mayor's office and the commissioner's office are the gateway to all projects. So when developers come in, I'm going to ask the question, how many units can you put aside 10% of your units to be able for affordable housing, right? Are you committed to this community and are you committed to seeing it through? And so the technical term is called inclusionary zoning, where you talk to developers and you say, can you give us a few? I know the city of Orlando looked at that a few years ago. I think we're definitely in a time of need where we have to bring that back. I think continuing the work and continuing the relationships that have been established and say, how can we bring in the Live Local Act, which allows for, you can build as high as you like, but it does, up to 40% must be affordable units. When you can increase density, you will also, there's also the opportunity to better our transportation. And so we have a big issue in our community with that, where people aren't being incentivized to ride the bus and the trains because it's not accessible. So if we build around our transportation, we can, we can use it more.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hope, same question.
I think there's three parts to this, to the answer to this question. Number one, of course, is more affordable housing, more mixed income apartment units. And some of those developments are happening around the district. But I think the second part is, you know, we need more, we need higher wages for our residents. We need more business opportunities to come into the local area where employees can earn higher wages so that they can keep up with the cost of living. You know, just a history of this area, you know, your largest employers, the theme parks, Disney, Universal, West Gate, things like that. You know, there have been issues about the amount that employees are being paid. So we want to see higher-paying jobs in the area. And, you know, I think the third thing is just, we need more workforce development to, you know, make sure that our residents are able to qualify for these higher-paying wage jobs in the community. And I think with those three things, you know, we'll begin to solve some of this, you know, people not able to afford the housing costs.
Okay, thank you. I think with the rising costs, you know, a lot of the neighborhoods I go through and been dealing with, a lot of people expressing that even the affordable housing units that were once solely kind of promoted as affordable housing have gone up hundreds of dollars each year or every six months. I think that we need to revisit how we praise or title affordable housing when it comes to the city of Orlando. One thing that I said in a forum last night and I want to reiterate is that when we have housing projects like Griffin Park that I know about, or even Carver Park that was, you know, formerly in Paramore, and you tear down these places and you kind of rebuild, if you're only rebuilding mixed income and 100% of these people here were on income-restricted places and you're only building mixed income, then you're weeding out people, even if it's not on purpose. There's no way mathematically that those people can afford these new units that are being built. So while we are building these mixed income projects, I think we need to go back to the basics also. I think we need to find developers that are dedicated to affordable housing projects, that that is their niche and that's what they're doing. And then we also need to make sure that we build these mixed income properties that help build up the district. So I think that also a piece that we know that the city of Orlando has had in the past that we saw during COVID from the city and the county was rental assistance. A lot of people are just one check or one thing away from being on the street and they can't afford what they have. So I think sometimes it's necessary to have those social services. And I think it's sometimes necessary to also build up our residents and make sure that we at the city are bringing different trades to the centers so that people can kind of expand what they're doing. I saw the past commissioner do many times, bring different trades to Callahan Center and different centers for people to learn. And I think that's something that we also need to bring back to the table to build up the community.
I'll ask a question about the budget. So the way that the city budgets, it's all about how you prioritize, what you prioritize and what you think is most important. And taking a look at the budget, what do you think needs to be funded more? And what do you think needs to be funded less? And it's a general question, but it really gets to what are your priorities? And what do you, how do you think the city should shift their priorities? So we'll start with Mr. Hope.
Well, obviously, in my opinion, what needs to be funded more is commercial development, economic development. I think that, you know, when we talk about things like affordable housing, you know, what that actually equates to is that, you know, there's, our residents don't have enough income to be able to afford the basic necessities of living. And I mean, I think that that's really unacceptable. And the reason that that's so is that they don't have any income or, you know, their income isn't meeting that standard and it's not above that standard. So I think that we need to be taken from, I think in District, well, I think that the city budget overall, the things that are spent on most is police and fire services. And so not saying that we don't need police services, but I think that we need to bridge that gap to where these funds are going back to the residents and, you know, creating things for the residents to prosper more. And so I think that that just eliminates a lot of the other problems that we have in the community.
Thanks for the answer, Ms. Rose.
I believe that we need to work on more funding for business assistance. So last night we talked about the MEBO program, which is, I used to work in the CRA and so it's kind of the I Have a Dream Fund, where we're educating young people, we're educating the community on entrepreneurship. I think we also need to spend more money in our neighborhood relations. I think we need to be able to connect with the neighborhood association and the nonprofit organizations who are doing the work and be able to fund some of the great work that they're doing. There's millions of dollars and trillions, actually trillions of dollars in funding that the city could be applying for to address our youth, our youth issues. There's ones that they could be addressing, applying for to address our senior issues. I think we need to send, I think honestly, I would hire someone that as I'm going out and I would say for the commissioners, as we're going out to neighborhood association meetings and we're meeting the residents, as a commissioner, and someone who's saying, okay, I can look into those and prioritize what we're applying for grant funds for so that it's not just for one thing versus another thing. I think it's, how do we fit, how do we expand some of our social services? Our seniors are on fixed incomes, right? And so that is a very vulnerable community, where some houses may not have insurance to do their rooms. And they, you know, how do we provide quality of living so that they can continue to stay in their house? Business assistance is really big. We also need to look at how do we waive impact fees for affordable housing? How do we encourage, you know, even with a developer who's building, who may be building luxury apartments, if you're going to put a certain amount of affordable units in, looking at waiving impact fees and being able to assist and bridge that gap, no matter where it is. And it may necessarily be in District Five, but it's in the city of Orlando.
Thank you, Mr. Mulrain. How would you change the budget? Where would you, what would you prioritize and what would you change?
Yes, like Mr. Hope said, I think a lot of the budget for the city does go towards law enforcement and fire services. And I think that does need to be revisited because when we're talking about budgeting, we're talking about putting money towards services that are actually reacting to stuff taking place in the community. We wouldn't need to bolster our law enforcement budget as much if we had some critical service in the community that was addressing the root cause. Now, I do think there has to be a key for that, but I think that when we're talking about District Five, a lot of people only think about the West Orange County neighborhoods. They don't remember that we have a lot of different venues in the neighborhood. So with that being said, I think that we need to make sure that when events are coming to town, they also are being incentivized to pour back into the district. We've seen something similar with EDC, where they started putting money back towards the area that they're putting these events at. And I think those type of programs and that type of innovation can help bring more money towards improvement in the neighborhoods. I would love to see the CRA improve grants for small homeowners to bring their houses up to code, to bring those places that may not look the best, to have those funds put out there for them to have those resources. And I would also love to see more rental assistance programs. But more importantly than just social services, I would love to see more programs dedicated to improving the people's quality of life. We've seen groups like Career Source and others come to the neighborhoods and get funding to give free employment to people and provide free paid internships so people can get experience. Those are the things that I believe program-wise should be built up because when we have more revenue and more potential in the neighborhood, then we got a safer community altogether.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask about the city's relationship with its utility commission. And one of the issues that we've seen come up is the safety of drinking water. And I know that the OUC has repeatedly insisted that its water is safe and that it complies with all the EPA guidelines. But there are a lot of chemicals out there that are not part of the EPA guidelines. And what I'd like to know is, how should the city council be interacting with OUC to explore possibly testing for some of those or keeping close your eye on the quality of drinking water? And I'd like to start with Mr. Mulrain.
Thank you. I think it's very crucial when we're talking about anything that's related to the environment and the Utilities Commission, especially with our drinking water. I myself, growing up in District Five, have known that we have had reports of people who have gotten sick from different environmental factors in the district, whether it was caused by the water, the pipes, or even just the environment from all the building and construction. So I believe when we have a Utilities Commission that the city council can interact with, So I believe when we have a a ca- a utilities commission that the city council can interact with, it's important that we make that a priority. I think that we see so much priority in building so many venues and different things, but it's not a priority on making sure that the residents have safe and clean drinking water. I think that we can't be, have a city without the people. So it's really simple that that needs to be something that the city council, that we work with the utilities commission in order to find out, how can we help fund this project for this research? How can we help make sure that we're doing everything to make sure that you can meet these earmarks? And on top of that, how can we make sure you go above and beyond? Because we know that you can meet certain restrictions and you can have the requirements, but are you doing any innovations to make sure that we have the newest and cleanest, you know, water or the newest and cleanest energy emission? Because it's very important with the city that we're growing and we're building and doing so much stuff that the infrastructure is key. Because we don't want to end up in a situation like Flint, Michigan, or other cities in this country that have gone through these tragic incidents. So I think it's important that we're proactive and we work with also outside entities, places that are endorsed by the EPA, that also have tools and resources that they could bring to us. None of us are gonna have all the answers. None of us gonna be an expert in every field. It's important to be willing to work with the people and research and do what's needed to make that happen.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mr. Hope, if you could, um, answer that question, please.
Yeah, um, issues, uh, regarding the EPA and, uh, you know, clean water and clean air. I think that there are just things that, you know, the city's responsibility is to definitely research these issues, monitor them, and then, you know, enact, uh, policies that, you know, uh, that, I guess, demand that companies like O U C are, you know, stand within the standards of acceptability when it comes to these issues. Um, you know, as as far as I've seen, um, O U C, they have been doing a decent job with that. Uh, but in District Five, uh, we do have issues with air quality because of construction and because of, uh, you know, the the highways that run through District Five. And as we continue to expand and develop, I just think that, you know, the city's job is to continuously monitor and make sure that, uh, these companies are staying within compliance of a standard that's safe, you know, for our community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rose?
Um, so I was talking about saying the mayor currently sits on the O U C board. So upon being elected, I'm gonna sit down with the mayor and kind of hear from him, um, and how we can work together. Um, technology is where it is, right? So we're in the, we're in 2024 where technology is at your fingertips. Um, and the the question before is about funding. I think we need to look at, how do we spend funds to ensure that we help O U C? Uh, we go out and look for grant funds with O U C to make sure we have the best technology testing our water. In the town of Eatonville, we just got $35 million for, um, uh, clean water, between our clean water and our sewer water. So the funds are out there and they're available, just about, that has to be a commitment. And I'm committed to environmental justice and being able to make sure that the residents of District Five and the city of Orlando have clean water. But it first starts with communication, you know, what is in the pipeline? So, uh, and so I used to work at the city of Orlando, so we can have an idea today and it may take two years to come into fruition. So it's really turning down and having the conversations with the staff members and the directors at O U C to say, what are we working on? What is in the pipeline? What are you all trying to receive and trying to get? It may be a conversation, a trip to Tallahassee, it may be a trip to the D C if there are funds available that, you know, maybe O U C has been trying to apply for and they haven't been able to obtain. So technology is gonna be the key on how we ensure that we're testing all possible, um, um, things that may be inside of the water.
Thank you very much. We are, um, getting pretty close to the end of our time. That's gone really fast. I appreciate everybody's answers. Um, did Jay or Julie, did either of you have another question you wanted to ask? Cause I, I have one more follow-up, but that's.
No, I don't.
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay, well, what I'd like to ask each of you, um, especially since we have a bunch of, a a bunch of people who have been interacting with the city. Um, if you could tell us over the past couple of years, how many city council meetings have you attended in person and how many have you watched online? And let's start with Mr. Hope.
Oh, that's a great question. Um, I've 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 attended two in person. And, uh, to be honest, I've watched maybe five of them online and that's just been recently. Um, you know, my aspirations to run as a candidate, uh, just became, uh, an aspiration here recently. Um, uh, I do follow other things in the community, um, but not so much from a city hall perspective, but more from a resident perspective and a business owner in the community perspective. So, um, my interaction with, uh, Ms. Hill, uh, I've been interacting with her a couple of times on some projects. Um, one, uh, uh, was the cleaning up of Orange Blossom Trail, uh, maybe about two years ago. So, um, I've had very limited, uh, interaction with city hall in that regard. But in the community, you know, I know the needs of the community and the people in the community and the business owners in the community and, uh, what needs to be done there.
Great. Uh, Ms. Rose, same question.
So I had, I was at city council meetings, um, the the two every, um, throughout the month. I've been there at least seven or eight, um, a couple of years ago when the mandates were coming down for the nightclubs. I stood side by side with them because the nightlife in downtown is, you know, that's epitome, right? And so they pay extra mileage into downtown development board. Um, as a former city employee, I'm still very well connected with all the directors from the chief of police to the public works director. So I still talk to everyone, at least early over in the Parks Department. And so my connection is not just, one, it's where it's, oh, if I need something, I want something. It's I go to community meetings, I'm in, you know, I'm in rooms, I'm on boards. So I interact with all of the current directors, the commissioners, um, have different conversations, working on different projects. You know, Commissioner, um, Krishna Riquete is doing a great job in his councils, like his community councils throughout his district. So being able to learn, how can we make a better, you know, how can we make District Five better? Um, as the next commissioner, how can we continue to work and how can we improve? How can we create a place and space where everyone can live, work and play here? Um, you know, as a former, again, as a former city of Orlando employee, I have the relationships and rapport. I'm endorsed by the the unions within the, um, the labor unions within the city of Orlando. So the employees are just as important as the people because we will not keep our city beautiful if we're not paying attention to the sta- the city staff. So I am endorsed by the unions with who believe in, you know, that I can do the work, not only in, when representing them, because I am a former union steward, but I can do the work as being a representative as their next commissioner.
Okay, Mr. Moreyne?
Um, yes, you know, so just for context, I've been doing this work formerly as a nonprofit leader since 2016. When I first started going to city council meetings, it was in 2016 around the Alton Sterling and the Land of Concealed things that took place when we organized the first Orlando Blackout March at Lake Yola with over 2,500 attendees. Since then, you know, I've actually been working with the city of Orlando, bringing programs like was pro- pro- formerly the Project Ceasefire, now known as the Community Violence Intervention Program. As far as city council meetings, I can say that it numbers over 15 or more, but it's been actually more during COVID when we were doing protests regularly at the actual city council, when we brought hundreds of peoples with us. I'm also a member of the citizen safety task force for Orange County. And I've also attended numerous Orange County, um, board of commissioner meetings. I've not always been on the best side of the city council. I've been there sometimes questioning them, sometimes going against the city commissioners and the mayor. People know me as an activist, as sometimes the person who agitates, but I have a good relationship with every commissioner to this day. For that reason, I was just under contract with the city of Orlando last year, bringing them programs to them to help build up the community violence intervention program while I was duly on the Orange County Citizen Safety Task Force. So I have a reputation of going against some things that I don't believe in, but also being able to work with those same entities. We were just awarded by the, um, Orange County Sheriff's Office to continue doing works with the survivors of crime in the neighborhood. And we will be doing that with the county also in June. So when it comes to involvement and city council meetings and just local engagement, I've been doing this for eight years strong and I don't plan to stop after this. I've been around before all the other elections. I've been, people who's been on my campaign, I've been on their campaign. And I'm gonna be around after this. This is not just a one-time thing thinking, this is a way of life. It's been a way of life and it's gonna continue to be that way.
Okay, thank you all very much. Um, uh, I, in just a few minutes, I'm gonna ask each of you to make, um, kind of a a a wrap-up statement that gives people an idea of, um, why the, why they should choose you in the selection. Um, but before I do that, I would like to remind everybody that while we will be making an endorsement in this race and there and there are four other candidates we're gonna be interviewing in in the second session. Um, we urge you to not just rely on our recommendations. Each of these candidates has websites and social media presence. Um, there are lots of news coverage of all of them. Um, and of course, our excellent Ryan Glesby foremost among those. And, and so do your own research, decide which of these candidates best represents your own values. And, um, make sure that you turn out to vote. Um, if you live in District Five, um, early voting starts May 13th. Election Day is May 21st. And if no candidate gets a clear majority of the vote, the top two vote getters will go on to a runoff. So with that, um, I would like to start with, um, Mr. Moreyne. And if you would give us basically two-minute information of why people should choose you in selection.
Thank you. Um, just to go over again, my name is Miles Moreyne. Um, I'm an executive director of a nonprofit called Let Your Voice Be Heard. Many people have seen me with the George Floyd protests. And I've been saying that, but it's more, it's deeper than that. You know, we started this in 2016 because there was a violence issue. There was a a equity gap. There was a social injustice issue taking place. We didn't start this to run for office. I started this because the community needed my help. And I stepped up with various others and I've still been standing strong. I've been around for a lot of campaigns. I've seen commissioners, I've seen mayors, I've seen elected officials from the state to the national level come and go. I've seen people come up with think tanks and task forces. I've been part of some of them. I've been through this process. The reason why I'm running is not because I have an issue with the past commissioners, it's because I'm from this district. I grew up here. I've been doing the work here unfunded and really unresourced. So if there's a chance for me to affect more change and do that with the tools that I have, then I believe that I'm the best fit for it. I've been able to move thousands of people without any kind of resources. And I believe that when it comes down to commissioner, it's not only about who's the most proficient in one field. It's about who's gonna be the person that fights for the community, who is the heir to the community? Who does the community want in that place, fighting for them and who they could trust? And I believe that a lot of people feel that is me. I also have been fighting for this. Any candidate that goes past me, this, that's the chance, and I feel that they are well-fit, I will support them. I'm not in this to make enemies. I'm in this to make real change and I will be around after this. I'm doing work with survivors of crime. I'm doing work with transitional housing. I'm doing stuff in District Five regardless of a title. And I implore people to come look at my website, come check out some of the stuff we're doing and get to know me because this is deeper than an election. This is deeper than just something that's taking place that's on the news. This is my life. This is our life. This is our district. And I'm telling you, when you want somebody who's gonna fight for us and make effective change and know how to work with different entities like I have in the past, then I think you should vote for me and you will not have your vote wasted. And if you want to visit my website, it's www.milesforDistrictFive.com.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Hope, same, 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 uh, challenge to you. Give us two minutes on why we should pick you.
Well, my name's Cameron Hope. Um, I've been in the District Five, uh, uh, as a business person for over 15 years. Um, I understand, um, the business complexity of 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 the district. And I think what I represent in this district is long-term sustainability, uh, for businesses. I think that that's very important. I think that we need to have thriving businesses. I think that the residents of District Five need to have equity in this business. Or the city of Orlando is, uh, uh, is considered a world-class city and it's it's grown to that position because of the major companies that have grown and allowed the residents of 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 the city of Orlando to grow, grow and flourish, uh, with the city. So District Five is just a microcosm of that. And until we have those, you know, those businesses that, uh, our residents can, you know, be a part of, that they can own, that they can, uh, be employed in those businesses and they can obtain those incomes that are gonna lift them up to the level of the rest of the city. Uh, you know, we're still gonna be lagging behind. So that is, you know, that is my main goal. My main focus is to make sure, you know, that we're dealing with the challenges that we have in our community, uh, those obstacles that are keeping us from achieving those goals. And, you know, if I'm elected city commissioner, I will be, you know, tackling those challenges and obstacles to make sure that we, you know, have that sustainability that we need to, uh, keep up with the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Rose, you get the last word.
Well, I'm the last on the ballot. I am Shan Rose and we're gonna move us to the first. Um, I'm Shan Rose and I run for District Five City Commissioner. Because like many in this community, I've faced the the hurt, the pain, and I've also triumphed. When I lost my husband to gun violence, I continue to advocate for this community. I continue to work on creating a safer community. When I lost my son to health condition, um, several years ago, it was because of lack of healthcare access. And so the things that I do and the passion that I have, working with our youth and working with our community, is being a connector. And that's really what a district, that's really what a commissioner is. It's supposed to be a connector to the people, the businesses that's represented. I not only have the support of, you know, the businesses and the residents, I also have the support of the city staff. As a former city of Orlando employee, I have the longest tenure. I get the policies, I have the relationships, I have the rapport, I understand how government works. Currently the CRA executive director in the town of Eatonville, so I'm still in government. I still get the inner workings, the relationships on the local, the state and the national level. Um, currently I'm the the lead coordinator for the Black History Museum. So being able to fight for this community, being able to fight for central Florida is something that I, I'm not new to. I'm really true to this. I want to champion for the computer, the people in this district, both the businesses, the residents. We gotta, we definitely have to work with our youth and our seniors. That's our, that's our, you know, our past and that's our future. We've got to bridge that gap, make sure that there are programs and there are opportunities for them to continue to thrive in this community. Um, as your next city commissioner, I want you to know that I have your back at the, that day is. I have your back at 400 South Orange Avenue, someone who's gonna champion, who's gonna listen, who's gonna say, how can we work together for a de- a better District Five where everyone can live, work and play? I'm committed to continue the great work that Commissioner Hill has started and let's figure out how do we expand upon that. I ask for your vote and I ask for your support and I ask that you, you know that you have someone who has your back when you vote. Um, you can find me Shan Rose on social media and I ask for your support.
Thank you so much. Um, we really look forward to seeing what happens with the election. But we wish you all good luck and and we really enjoyed talking to you today.